Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item on the agenda is student reports. We have student reports tonight. Who would like to start?
Hi, my name is Alicia Fagarsky and I am a sophomore at Proudey. The week of the 6th through 10th, we had an excellent homecoming week. That culminated with a pep rally on Friday. That night culminated with a big win for Proudey's football team. We crushed Blackstone Valley Tech thirty-four to zero. On the sixteenth, Proudey hosted an orientation for all eighth graders. Students arrived at twelve-thirty and received a warm welcome from Proudey. They were also given a small taste of what we have to offer. This same night, Proudey hosted a successful parents' night. On the sixteenth and seventeenth, all tenth graders were tested for hearing and vision. On the seventeenth, eight student council officers had training at Holy Cross College Officers Training. On the eighteenth, the marching band hosted its annual Taste of the Towns fundraiser. This fundraiser allows citizens to sample different fruits from various vendors in our towns. Later that night, Proudey held our annual homecoming dance in the gymnasium. The theme of the evening was Starry Night. Congratulations to our homecoming King and Queen Tristan Day and Savannah Mattie. On the twenty-third, a financial aid seminar will be held for the parents of the juniors and seniors. On the twenty-third, student council will be hosting Kids Fest at the high school from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. On the twenty-fifth, grades nine and ten will be taking a trip to Six Flags for their annual Fright Fest. On the twenty-eighth, we will be holding the White Sweater Ceremony. Later that evening, TRIM and Thespian Honor Society will be holding their induction ceremony at seven PM. And finally, tonight at Proudey, Proudey's Quarter One Chorus Class will be holding its nineties concert. The cost is five dollars and it will start at seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Holmberg. I'm the president of the National Junior Honor Society. I will be promoting out for Knox Trail News. The National Junior Honor Society began the tutoring program at the beginning of October. Members were asked to sign up with the subjects they felt most comfortable with for tutoring. Tudorees are by teacher recommendation or students contacting an NGHS member personally. Lists of available tutors are posted around the school. The Halloween Dance will be held this Friday from six-thirty to eight-thirty. Knox Trail has partnered with the Boston Museum of Science to pilot an eight-week engineering club after school. Mrs. Buckley, a science teacher at Knox, will meet with twenty students, grade six to eight, and work on many engineering tasks. And they will end by creating a vertical garden. This is the third time that Knox Trail has been selected by the Boston Museum of Science to participate. Art Club applications are being accepted until October twenty-third. Foreign Language Club will be learning Italian for the next six weeks. The magazine drive continues to be a big success. Approximately eight thousand dollars has been raised. The money will be used for agenda books, field trips, assemblies, and technology for the classroom. Thank you to all the people who have supported us during this fundraiser. On October seventeenth, the P U leaders and honor society students worked at Lake Street School assisting in spreading mulch and setting up the playground. We would like to thank Wheel of Rader Corporation and Warren's Funeral Home for their generous donations. Their kindness allowed us to purchase new uniforms for the girls and boys's soccer teams.
That's a nice job by both our students. Okay, next item on the agenda, recognition of recipients of the John Abigail Adams Scholarship. Dr. Malvey.
Right. Mr. Bayshon, principal of David Proudey High School, is going to come forward and introduce the students. And I'll leave the explanation to Dave of what this is all about so I don't take away any of his thunder. Mr. Bayshon.
Good evening. It's my honor to ask these kids to please come forward right now, those that are here. We have twenty-eight students at David Proudey High School who received the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, which... How many we got? Yeah, go ahead. Just stand on the stairs. How's that? We've already honored these kids in the newsletter and in school as well. They each scored so on the MCAS exam, we had this twenty-eight of them total, that they received free tuition to state colleges or universities and community colleges in Massachusetts. So, I know it's not the whole smash, but it is tuition. It doesn't include all the fees and the books and everything else, but twenty-eight of our kids received this honor. So congratulations. I just wanted them to be recognized this evening. Thank you, guys and girls.
Dave, could you identify the students that are with us?
I'm sorry, I'm glad you said that. I'm going to read all twenty-eight. Jacob Arsenault, Anna Bogdan, Nicole Cummings, Jacqueline Deiotis, Jamie Fontaine, Josh Lavalley, Arianna Malakam, Jackson Paul, Amanda Stockman, Phil Young, Yvonne Banyer, Ryan Bowen, Miranda Dab, Lydia Fahey, Taylor Houston, Jared Lewison, Zach McNulty, Ashlyn Perrow, Isabella Sullivan, Brandon Benoit, Michaela Brown, Alexander Dakri, Austin Fitman, Sam La Croix, Terry Lidle, Robert, I'm sorry, Daniel Robert Orpilla, Degory Standish, and Robbie Van Dyke. So with us this evening, oh boy. Yeah, why don't you guys say it? Tell the cameras who you are.
How about if they go right down the line and speak good and loud so that we can pick you up in the car?
Yeah, nice and loud.
Starting over here with this gentleman.
I'm Alex Dakri.
Alex Dakri, go ahead.
I'm Daniel La Croix.
I'm Taylor.
I'm Robbie Van Dyke.
I'm Isabella Sullivan.
I'm Brandon Benoit.
I'm Jacqueline Deiotis.
I'm Yvonne Banyer.
I'm Daniel Orpilla.
Unfortunately, many of the others are involved in functions back at the school this evening, athletics, as well as the getting ready for the choristers. So if you get out of here by seven o'clock, dip in over there for five bucks, you see a pretty good group of singers. That's it. Thank you very much, guys. Thanks for coming. You guys are free to go. If I can, we have another student that was one of these folks, but also the Nordstrom Scholarship. It's, they award eighty scholarships in North America, including Puerto Rico. Eighty. They've been doing so since nineteen ninety-four. Of these eighty scholarships, only eight students received a scholarship in the United States. David Proudey High School senior Jackson Paul is one of those eight. On Friday, October seventeenth, about ten-thirty in the morning, they have a little prize patrol. And they informed us, we learned about it several weeks ago and had to keep it a secret, even from his family till the last minute. So we put together a little skit, like how are we going to surprise this young man? So, Mrs. Tumajin, the librarian, and I, we said, okay, let's take him. He was supposed to go to the Officers Training at Holy Cross, so we took him down to the library and said, VHS wants to interview a student that's taken several VHS courses. And he bought it, thank God. So while she took him in there, I looked up what students, you know, what teachers had, seniors, went to their classrooms. At ten-thirty, please send your seniors. At ten-fifteen, send the seniors to the auditorium. We got them down to the auditorium and luckily the risers were set up for this chorus thing tonight. I said, sit on the risers. While they were doing this, and their teachers were with them, zip back to the office. Jackson's mom and dad and sister were there. And in comes the prize patrol, and they got cupcakes and gifts and everything for Jackson and his class. So I took them across the hall, explained to the seniors what it was all about. Jackson received a ten thousand dollar scholarship. And they also gave him an iMac laptop computer, which was pretty impressive. We had a couple chairs set up outside the front of the stage. We said it's going to be filmed, the interview for this VHS people, they want to publicize what they're doing. So a couple of chairs were set, a microphone, walkie-talkie, call them down. So Belinda walked him down, didn't come backstage, went around, we had the curtains drawn. He came in, he sat down, and they got him wired up and they said, that looks good. Okay, Mrs. Tumajin, will you go get Mr. Bayshon and the VHS people? So she left the auditorium, came around backstage, we pulled the curtain open. We had his family, the prize patrol, and the entire senior class. The camera was on the wrong side because his face, I got emotional. Okay, it takes a lot for me to get emotional. But I tried to tell my wife about this later that night, and I actually had tears in my eyes, getting goosebumps, you know, because I was just, this kid was so... He went to Iceland on a vacation. And while he was in Iceland, looking at a volcano, he Skyped his interview over the summer. He was on Skype doing the interview with these Nordstrom folks to get the scholarship. And he had grown his hair out, so he had like a ponytail, and that was part of his thesis, you know, was how people stereotype you with long hair. And he won. He was only one of eight kids in the United States, so I think that's a nice feather in our cap. Great job.
Congratulations.
Two more things and I'll sit down. On October seventeenth, the Massachusetts Academy of Math and Science notified myself with a letter that our music teacher, band instructor, Mr. John Wage, will be honored at a teacher appreciation luncheon on November nineteenth at the academy. He's being honored for the important contributions and significant role he has played in the education of several students that now attend that academy, and I just want to give a shout out to John Wage. Finally, I did appeal to the DESE Accountability Office regarding our Level Three status at the high school. They did respond to me yesterday afternoon, and they did expunge the record of one of the five students, which put us back at ninety-one percent and ninety percent in the high needs, low income category participation. And they also stated that they will move us back to Level Two instead of Level Three. That's all good and great. I'm still thinking of pursuing it a little bit further with the help of Dr. Malvey. We're going to sit down and make sure I speak the right way and see if we can get it back to Level One. But, you know, there's a, what's the word I'm looking for? A precedent, I guess, has been set in dealing with these types of things with other school districts. So they're saying, you know, we can't just put you back if we didn't put them right back. And there are four kids that they're saying, we've already discussed with our guidance department, with respect to moving, advancing students from grade to grade, sometimes, you know, halfway through their, if they were held back as freshmen, and they get enough credits halfway through the year, boom, make them a sophomore. Problem being, they may not have had both biology classes or passed algebra and geometry, and therefore, they're not really prepared to take that test. So, we're not going to advance kids from freshman to sophomore. If they were held back as freshmen, we're going to wait the full year. Because once they, the SIMS reporting goes into the Department of Ed, and they see, oh, this kid's a sophomore, he's getting that test for whether it's the science, the English, or the math. So we're going to stop the practice, which I think, you know, if any good came out of it, that should eliminate this problem as well. So that's all I have.
Thanks for your effort in doing that, David.
Thanks. Thank you. I don't know if any of you have ever seen a three-D printer. It's actually a printer in our CAD lab at the high school that we just acquired. And this thing uses a plastic filament, and it goes back and forth and builds this in one felt swoop. So when it's all done, you just pick it up and it's done. It heats the plastic, melts the plastic. You design it on the computer, put your program into the printer, it tells it what to do, and it makes whatever you designed. Unbelievable stuff. I'm going to, like, pass it around so you can look at it. This took six hours to make on this printer. It just goes back and forth. You just get dizzy watching this thing, and all of a sudden, you turn around and this is produced. So it's just something that the kids, another little trinket the kids have to mess around with in the CAD lab. So I'll pass it around. That's all.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, moving on, next item on the agenda, Secretary reports. Approval of the minutes of September twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Knappin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Messier. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next is approval and retain the minutes of executive session of September twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Nodquist. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Knappin. Further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, approval of the minutes of October sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Knappin, second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Messier. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, approval of minutes of October seventh, two thousand and fourteen. Motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Nodquist, second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Messier. Discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, approval of the minutes of October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Knappin, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Messier. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Lastly, approval and retain the minutes of executive session of October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion.
Motion by Mr. Nodquist, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Knappin. Discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, so voted. Thank you. Financial report. Approval of the expenditure report. Dr. Malvey, or...
I'll defer to Julie. There are some transfers very limited and very minor in comparison to what we've done in the past. So unless there's any other information, Julie? No.
Any questions from any board members in regards to the expenditure report or the transfers that have been made? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Next item, financial oversight update from Mr. Roger Young.
As Roger, sure, Roger, come on up to the podium if you would. As Roger comes forward, I'd just like to indicate that Roger has been very, very consistent with his visitations to us, and he was out today for the majority of the day and then stayed around for this evening's meeting. From a personal perspective, I have found his involvement in the district nothing but purely professional. That is, he has listened to all of us in the central office on his visits to get caught up on what the actions may have been for the week or two before his previous visit. He also reviews very, very thoroughly the budget information and all financial information with not only Julie but with Sue Torrey and some of the other folks that are involved in the central office as well. As Roger will attest to, he then informs the Commissioner's Office through Jay Sullivan and Christine Lynch. And he does share the preliminary report before it goes forward to them to make sure that he hasn't missed in terms of the accuracy of the issues that we've brought to his attention, and I appreciate that. I think the process, although none of us wanted it from the get-go, the process is working, and I would expect that it would continue working as I move on from the district and the new superintendent becomes involved. And I will certainly be attentive to all the ins and outs of how this relationship works to bring the new superintendent up to speed. And I expect that that relationship will be positive, professional, and worthwhile as we go forward into the second half of the year. Roger?
Great. Thank you very much for that introduction. And as I think most of you know, I've been providing the financial oversight for about fourteen months now. And that the role of this position is to review all of the monthly financial reports and transactions, to review the budget, to understand and promote best practices and processes in managing resources, meet regularly with the staff, and then, as Dr. Malvey said, to report on a monthly basis to the Department of Education. So that the overall goal is for the district to really be able to demonstrate consistency and predictability in managing resources, and that those are all within the bounds of legal requirements. So I look at that, and you could say, well, how do you know that somebody or that a district is achieving that goal? And I look at particular key indicators. And the first one is that monthly budget reports are timely and that they're within budget, so that if there are any variations or any adjustments to be made, they're brought to the committee on a timely basis and brought to the Department of Education for approval as well. So that's one key indicator. Another one is that cash flow is managed and projected each month for the remainder of the year, so that if something does change, everybody is alerted to it sooner than later. Another key indicator is that the cash is reconciled on a monthly basis to the bank statements. So that's another important item to take care of. Probably one of the biggest items in terms of this consistency and predictability is that the closing of a fiscal year and the opening of a fiscal year go smoothly and uneventfully. And all of this is being audited by the auditor that's engaged by the school district, but it's also being monitored by the Department of Revenue. And so when you have these regulatory, or regulatory agencies like the Department of Revenue or the Department of Education, looking at what's happening in a school district and seeing that it's smooth and uneventful and it's, oh, hum, everybody is within budget, well, that's exactly what you want to have, and that's another key indicator there as well. Another item that I think that all of you, I know that all of you are very much aware of, is that there are unforeseen and unpredictable activities or circumstances that occur during the year. And one of the key measures of a school district is to be able to handle them in a responsible and timely way and to be able to balance the needs of the district, and that's being done here. Another item that I wanted to mention is stability of leadership. That is a key indicator and that that leadership is not changing so that somebody else has to come up to speed right away, and that there is an implementation of best practices and processes for managing resources. So the results to date is that I believe that the district is managing their resources in a responsible manner that's consistent and predictable. So congratulations to the district for doing that. And in doing so, I would like to acknowledge the leadership of the district and in particular, the superintendent, the business manager, and the treasurer. Those are the three key people that I deal with on a regular basis. But that acknowledgement just doesn't stop or rest with them. It goes to every one of the central office staff who understands what the best practices and processes are, and that they're consistent and predictable in terms of taking care of their details, as well as the principals and the other key staff, and other staff in the district. So that I think that although I identify three key positions, the success of the district really rests with many and on many shoulders. So I think that that's very good. The challenge that I think the district is going to be facing in the foreseeable future has to do with the change of leadership. So we have a change of leadership with the superintendent, we have a change of leadership with the school business official. And the key issues from my perspective in managing finances is that the district continue to maintain the importance and focus of the financial stewardship for the community, what they're responsible for. So that's one item. And then, to just continue with the good work and to practice that model of continuous improvement and always look to be able to do something better the next month or the next year. So with that, it's a very short report, but that I do think that the district is managing its resources responsibly. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for any board members? Mr. Nodquist.
I just want to say that was a good report, Ms. Young, and I want to also say hats off to Dr. Malvey and Julie and the treasurer, Susan Torrey, for getting things back in order, and it shows in your report. So I just want to say, thanks for picking that up.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much, Roger, for all your efforts.
All right, have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, next item is unfinished business curriculum update personnel initiatives. Dr. Malvey?
Yes, I'm going to ask Dr. Zaleski to come forward. Although I have been participating in all the activities, the most recent one, I wasn't able to give one-hundred percent of my time to. And as usual, Karen is a go-to person on this, so I'd ask her to come forward and report out of our most recent event with the DSAC group and some of the other initiatives that we're continuing to work on. Dr. Z?
Thank you. So DSAC came out and provided our professional development, and it went very well. We are continuing the work of not only mapping, but now we're really getting into the nitty-gritty with the curriculum and looking at, you know, the resources that we have available to really carry it out with fidelity. And at the high school level, we're utilizing data teams. And Tom Lamy from DSAC actually is really strengthening that work so that way the use of the data at the high school... Last year, just to give you a little history, the high school worked on planning some common assessments, and because the work of curriculum mapping goes pre-K to eight right now. And I met with Tom earlier in the year with Dave Bayshon, and we made a determination that we didn't want to just push that work aside. We wanted to continue, and how could we capitalize on the good work that was done? So that being said, we made an agreement to continue to utilize the common assessments as the driving force for the data teams up at the high school. And what that's essentially going to do is that's going to filter into the district determinate measures for the district, which is mandated by the state. So I'm pretty excited about that because the high school staff really have put a lot of work into that, and we did not want that to fall by the wayside. So that being said, DSAC is going to continue their work with us, and I'm very excited to report that I had the opportunity to attend a training in Leicester on district determinate measures, excuse me, for my specialists. And while I was at that training, the Teachers Twenty-One Coordinator was there, and I had a real opportunity to have a one-to-one conversation with him, because it's kind of difficult on PD days to do that. And I was expressing to him my concern that I didn't want Teachers Twenty-One to be taking the high school and the school district in one direction and DSAC taking the school district in another direction with the Teacher of Altu, because DDMs all filter into that. So anyway, Teachers Twenty-One volunteered their time, which they can be quite costly. They volunteered their time at the last PD day, and Teachers Twenty-One partnered up with DSAC to collaborate, to ensure that what we're doing is going to meet with effectiveness. So, pretty exciting stuff, and we're continuing the work with both agencies.
Thank you very much, Karen.
You're welcome.
Any questions for any board members in regards to Karen's report? Okay.
I also want to mention that Karen still remains to be very, very instrumental in seeking out any grants that are on the horizon there that we can bring in some financial resources into the district. That coupled with some grant money that we've already received over the course of the summer, again, through Karen's effort in applying to DSAC, assists us in this work that we're doing. And overall, for the colleagues that I work, I'm absolutely thrilled with the level of the effort and excitement that we have on the leadership team this year. When we meet, we go well beyond our time, and at times, it's humorous trying to get everyone to focus in on what the topic is, because there are so many initiatives that we're dealing with that someone has a certain expertise in one area, and they start talking to the colleague on the right or the left, and we have to bring people back in. But it is just a tremendous, tremendous professional activity for us to be involved in, and we wish we didn't have the reason of being a Level Three. But be that as it may, it forces all of us to think in different formats, if you will, and ultimately... and ultimately to address the lack of curriculum, written curriculum that was here in the district, and we're making great strides to pull that together. As I've said often, it's not an over-the-night fix, and you're probably in this for three to five years, so stay at it as you go forward.
Thank you, Dr. Malvi. It certainly does sound like there are a lot of good things coming out of some of the hurdles that we've had to get over in the past year and a half. And sometimes we're maybe a little reluctant to recognize publicly the work that's being done, but we do appreciate Karen, your efforts, and you certainly have stepped up on many fronts, and thank you for doing it. Okay. Next item is business administrator search update. Dr. Malvi?
As you know, I did post the position upon Julie's notice of resignation. And although we didn't have large numbers applied, the folks that have applied and that I have initially done a paper screening and an initial screening interview, I am pleased to say that I've identified, I think it was four, quality candidates that I think should have further consideration. And I am going to extend the search. We closed it, I want to say, about a week ago, but I will extend it to see if there's still some folks out there that may be interested. And of the folks I continued to interview this week, but of the folks that I have already interviewed, some of them are certified business managers. One has worked in a school district, one in a regional school district, and one has worked for a short period of time in an independent school district. Two other individuals lack the school-level experience but come from a high level of financial managerial experience in other agencies with budgets that are well beyond what we have, and they have very similar operations and reporting procedures, both to their local boards or oversight groups, as well as to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I think with some tweaking and proper training of individuals of that caliber, they certainly could grow very, very quickly into the position. So I'm going to be continuing with that, and I'm sensitive to the committee's interest of having some type of involvement. And I've already reached out to the new superintendent once those issues get resolved with the school committee, to have her become involved in it, too. My ultimate goal would be to have someone on board before Julie leaves and certainly before I leave. And if that's not possible, then I'll have some type of temporary patch, if you will, someone that would be willing to come in on a short-term basis until we can get the correct person on a long-term basis. So it is moving forward, and I was pleasantly surprised, at first disappointed with the numbers, but then pleasantly surprised as I started to talk to some of these candidates. They have the wherewithal to step into this type of position. So I think the better days are ahead for us, and I'll continue with it till we hit the right candidate to bring forward.
Thank you, Dr. Malvi. Any questions from any board members in regards to that? Next item, bullying and intervention plan. Dr. Malvi?
I put these back on, only as a reminder to the committee. We did bring it forward at a previous meeting to the committee, and certainly the staff has it and it's available to the public. And as a reminder that if there's anything that the committee thinks should be looked at, adjusted, or comments that you have, please forward them to me or directly to Dr. Zaleski. And we then will bring it back for a final approval by the committee. Karen, is there anything else I need to add to that?
There is a little bit of a sense of urgency, as it really needs to be publicly posted so that way, in the event there is a bullying incident, parents and staff alike know how to access the resources. And the current bullying prevention intervention plan is outdated. That is posted. So if you couldn't get to that, I would appreciate it. The emergency response plan, it's tied together with the bullying plan. There's sections in the emergency response plan that directly address the bullying, too, so I can't update the emergency response plan any further until the committee votes on the bullying plan approval. So just to let you know that, and I would appreciate any feedback you have, and certainly willing to revise accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. I would suggest, Dr. Malvi, if we leave it open for one more reading so that all the members can be present, and I will ask everybody if they have any comments or any questions to contact either you or Dr. Zaleski in the meantime, and then perhaps be prepared to vote on it at the next.
That'd be great. Thank you.
The next item was the emergency response plan. Do you have anything to add to that?
The same. Ditto for what I said on the first one.
Okay. Members have that all in their package. You got that this week, both of those plans. So please take the opportunity to review them in the next week or so. If you have any questions, you can reach out to Dr. Malvi or to Dr. Zaleski, and we'll be prepared to vote on it at the next meeting. Under new business, sports fees. This was put on by Mr. Nodquist. Kurt, would you like to?
I think you skipped one.
Did I miss something?
Yep. Hey, we added this as a review.
Oh, this is in there? Okay. Our next, acceptance of donation, computers.
Okay. If I may, I'm going to ask Steve Torrey to come up, but this is a nice donation, if you will. Under the law, when we have donations, they need to be brought forward to the school committee for formal acceptance or rejection. In this case here, we were contacted early on. I'll let Steve talk about the details of it, but through the goodness of a local college, we have the opportunity to pick up some additional computers. Steve?
Yeah, good evening. WPI reached out to us, and they had 20 Dell computers of the same vintage as roughly our newest Dell computer, which is about five years old. And we were just looking to accept that donation in order to get those out into some classrooms throughout the district.
Great. Does that require a formal vote?
Yes. Yes.
Any questions for any members on the board in regards to, Mr. Nodquist?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say if Dr. Malvi or yourself would send a thank-you letter to WPI for those computers, because it's really going to help us, and they should get a letter saying thank you to be recognized.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion by Ms. Napton, seconded by Mr. Nodquist. Any further questions? Others in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Close are voted.
I think I just have to caution everyone that may eventually pick up on this. And as much as we like to receive donations, we also have to make sure that they work.
Right.
And there's going to be a little bit of fix-up on this that we'll certainly be able to handle in our tech department. But over the course of my career, I've had folks that have donated computers that are absolutely useless. I've had people give us baby grand pianos, but it costs an arm and a leg to tune them and get them into the proper key and pitch. So as much as we're appreciative, we're also sensitive to the goodness of people's intent, but making sure that it works for us, too. So thank you to WPI.
Thank you, Dr. Malvi. All right, Mr. Nodquist, you're up. Sports fees.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'd just like to, I just want to say to the chairman, I brought this up last spring, and it was probably too late in the season, so that's why I'm bringing it back again on sports fees. And we're going to be starting basketball now, because football's already started. But I would like to ask through the chair to Mr. Beishant if he could give us an update at the next meeting on all sports and gate fees, what they're collecting on each sport, because sometimes I have some questions. I got some comments from parents that they take in less at the gate than they're paying out. So I'd just like to know what the numbers are on that, and if you could get back to us at the next meeting with all sports that have a gate fee. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no. I think we certainly can look at that for, are you talking this year, Kurt, from the start of school, or going back to last year to see what we have for numbers?
No, starting right now.
Starting right now? Okay. So whatever sports we have, as soon as we can get this out, we'd be more than happy to bring it back to the committee. Dave, do you need any further clarification?
So you just want how much we take in?
Well, what you're taking in on the fees for each sport, whether it's...
Gate receipts, you mean, not sports fees? I want to make sure.
No, gate receipts. Okay. Gate receipts for all sports, football, whatever, basketball, whatever. We don't have hockey, but whatever. Soccer, if there's any going on, or whatever.
Okay. Kurt?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Next item, enrollments. You have a report in your packet in regards...
Personnel information.
What's that?
Personnel information.
Yeah, you also have personnel information in your packet. Anybody have any questions in regards to personnel or enrollments? You are also given the school newsletters from the various schools. They're all very well-done, and the only sad thing is it reminds us that winter is coming.
[laughing].
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nodquist.
If I could make a comment on the newsletters, if not, I'll hold it to the school committee comments.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. It was last month, or I think it was last month, I went to East Brookfield at Mr. Tomlin's request, and it was an ice cream social. And I got the best job I won. I was putting whipped cream on the ice cream. The kids were, they all like whipped cream, so I had a blast there, and I think they had a sold-out crowd, and you see the faces on the children. Boy, this was great, you know? And there were some other school members here, Mr. Ethia and Mrs. Messia, and they worked there, and some people from East Brookfield. But it was a great cause, and I think they happened to raise some money for the school, so I had a good time there. My second thing is, I was up to Lake Street School a week ago or so. I brought apples for the children, and Dr. Malvi was there with me, and he was dressed up as he always was, and the kids came out and they picked apples, and there were some comments made. I'm Farmer Brown, we leave it like that, but they said, this must be the mayor of Spencer, Dr. Malvi. And there was one student, I don't know who the actor was, but he had glasses on, and he had like a fake mustache, and he thought Dr. Malvi was that same person, because he had glasses on. There was some actor, if you know who it is, Dr. Malvi, you can bring it up, but they really had a good time, and they were all happy, and that's what it's all about, getting the kids to enjoy going to school. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kurt. Thank you for your efforts, and thank you to the other board members that participated in the ice cream social. I know it's appreciated by the staff and the kids.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to give Kurt a pat on the back. He asked me to come up to help for a little bit, and I was there, I think, over an hour with Kurt, and delightfully so. But he watched every apple that was picked out of the bin that he brought up there, and he wouldn't, I think, I think we worked it out okay, Kurt, that he made sure that a youngster didn't walk away with a bruised apple, and we had a number of them. But he said very politely, this goes to the animals elsewhere, and made sure that a youngster had, if not two, good apples, at least one solid apple. And I thought that was a very, very nice gesture on his part, and the kids loved it. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I just could, I happen to see this. This was from the students at Lake Street School, and I'll hold them up. They all signed their name, and, you know, it really gets to me that, you know, they have to have a good time, and they want to say thank you. So there was, there was four pages here, and there was different teachers here. I might miss some, so I won't, there was Miss Gail and Julie, I think, was a teacher. But anyways, Mrs., I can't make that out the top, Mrs. Tonya. But this is what it's all about, the kids signing in their name, and they had a good time, and that's what it is to have a good learning day. So I want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Kurt. Next is hearing for visitors. Anybody? Stevens?
I just want to say that I had the pleasure of taking advantage of a tradition of some standing at the David Proudy High School on Saturday night, The Taste of the Town. It's the first time I'd been aware of it. It's my fault there, and the first time it really fit with my schedule. But I want to say I really enjoyed it, and a good opportunity to showcase all the restaurants in town where the district is blessed with a, you know, a lot of, you know, great eateries. And so it was a good event that was good for business, you know, good for the, you know, good for the school. And as I talked with one parent at some length, it's pretty clear it's a major fundraiser for the school. So I, it's funny, I feel inclined to bring up the name of Dr. Naaman. I know whose, you know, financial, you know, management skills, you know, fell short for us. But one thing that Dr. Naaman talked a lot about, and I'll give him a lot of credit for, was he was always concerned about the climate and culture of the district. I remember he would use that a lot. And I felt like in sitting there and watching the kids and watching the community come in, and specifically talking with this one parent, I really got quite an insight into that aspect of the climate and culture of David Proudy. And it struck me, it's one of those things that more people need to be aware of. It's a real asset for the district. I was really impressed at the participation. I also had a nice chance to talk with Steve here about computers. It was a very nice event. And it reminds me also that, inasmuch as I am your formal liaison with the Board of Selectmen, I'd be happy to announce with each Board of Selectmen's meeting, as we always do, under our communications line, any events at the school that I can help draw attention to. Just, I really feel like we have a year coming up. We need to get the communities and the schools more engaged. You know, there's been a lot of bad feeling. I got some really good vibes there on Saturday night. It was, it was a pleasure to be, to be in school at an event like that, that somebody was good for the kids, you know, good for everybody. And so if there's anyone who could, I'll certainly keep my ears and eyes out for events, but if there's anyone on the board or someone I should be checking with at the Blue Building on, you know, about events that need some highlighting or need some special attention, I'd be happy to do that with each Board of Selectmen's meeting. So, you know, a great event. I congratulate the kids, and we've got a couple new restaurants in town. I hope to see them represented next year. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Okay, we'll move on. School committee comments? Any future agenda topics you may wish to have? Anybody have anything that they would like to bring up? Mr. Nodquist?
Chairman, I just want to say I found out last week we had a public meeting that David Dawe, he moved on to another job, and I want to say thanks for his service to the school district and to the town for writing stories concerning the school, and I wish him best of luck.
Any other members have anything that they would like to bring up, or any questions for administration? I only have one, Dr. Malvi. Where are we with the audit time-wise, and do you have any idea when it's going to arrive? When are we going to have them in?
I'll defer to Jerly.
Okay.
I just got the draft of it yesterday, so it should be finalized hopefully relatively soon. I've already reviewed it, and there shouldn't be any changes. So I'm hoping, I've been trying to get him to nail down a meeting that he can come to, and we haven't come to a date yet, but it should be finalized in the next week.
Sure. Thank you. That's all I had. Nothing from anybody else. We have to go into executive session to discuss some collective bargaining issues in regards to the new superintendent, so we'll need it on a roll call vote with a motion. So is there a motion for executive session? Motion by Mr. Nodquist, seconded by Mrs. Napton. On a roll call vote, Mrs. Ethia? Mrs. Messia?
Aye.
Mr. Ethia?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Napton?
Aye.
Mr. Nodquist?
Aye.